We have a heat exchanger.
Call to order. Roll call, please.
Brian Card.
Here.
Virga Lawrence.
Here.
Matthew Wendorf.
Absent with notification.
John Serentopolis.
Here.
Michael Huco.
Here.
And Keith Thurlo.
Here. Michael, you'll be replacing Matthew. So this, addendums, any addendums?
Not at this time, no.
Citizens comments on items not subject to the public hearing. Anybody want to speak to anything tonight that's not on one of the public hearings? I think that's a no.
And there was nothing in the public comment.
Okay. Public comments can be emailed to publiccomment@killenlyct.gov or mailed to the Town of Killenly, 172 Main Street, Killenly, Connecticut, 06239. All public comment must be received prior to 2:00 PM the day of the meeting. Public comment received will be posted on the town's website, www.killenlyct.gov. To participate in citizens comments, the public may join the meeting via telephone while viewing the meeting on Facebook Live. To join by phone, please dial 1-415-655-0001 and use the access code 26321236933 when prompted. Okay. Special permit number, application 22-1298, Melissa Frank, David Pensac owner, Davenport Pensac owner. 330 State Avenue, JIS MAP 111, lot 16.44 acres, low-density zone. Request special permit to allow home occupation in a building outside the residence in the garage. Wizard or pause pet grooming. Under section 410.2.1.8, section 595.1 A to M and section 595.2, Article VII, special permits. And Marie, you wanted to...
Okay, first off, I'm just going to invite Melissa and her business partner to come and sit up at the table, please. Okay, I'd also like to tell the Planning and Zoning Commission that Melissa is requesting that we waive the requirement of a survey. Staff believes that that is, does make sense. The house was built, I believe, I have it down here, the house was built in 1870 and the garage was built in 1919. They're not going to move and they're not going to enlarge or increase anything. They are what they are. We did put in copies of the CII technologies. You have a picture showing her lot. And then you also have a map showing where her lot appears within the neighborhood. Her property is in the low-density zone and home occupations are allowed there. Home occupations are allowed outside of a resident via special permit. And that is why she's with you today because she's requesting to put it into the garage. Staff does agree with the waiver of the site plan. As I said, the house was built in 1870 and the garage was built in 1990. Square footage of the garage, according to the tax assessor's card, is 440 square feet. Less than half of the square footage allowed under zoning, which is 1,000 square feet. And that is for a home occupation. Staff believes the applicant has already applied for her trade name certificate and has made her application to the State of Connecticut Department of Agriculture, Bureau of Regulatory Services for a grooming facility. The applicant appears to have taken all of the required and necessary steps. And staff has explained to the applicant that if she becomes busy, overly successful, that she would need to find another location. Applicant has explained that she does not expect to become so busy as to adversely affect her residents or the neighbors. The applicant is here this evening to answer any particular questions that the board or the commission may have for her to answer. And all I'm going to say is just make sure that the green light is on and you can just hit where it says push and your green light can go on. Okay.
Any questions, Commissioner?
I'll start. Can you just tell us a little bit about your planned activities, you know, hours of operation, customer scheduling, you know, any pets going to be staying on-site premises? Just talk through a little bit of what your plans are so we understand, you know, how the business is going to work.
Sure. You want to take it?
Yeah, so I'm an experienced groomer. I've been grooming for 12 years now. It's always been a dream of mine to come into an opportunity to be able to, you know, be my own boss, so to speak. We're going to operate in the morning hours, particularly between 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM. It's going to be a drop-off and pickup service, likely appointment scheduled each hour. There is no plans to board dogs overnight or any longer than three hours, really. But it will be like a drop-off pickup type situation. And we don't have plans to have more than three dogs in the salon all at once.
Okay, so for the, I'll call it the two to three-hour time that the pets are there, will there be, is there any outdoor, you know, kenneling of them or any, I'm saying dogs kenneling, could be any animal, but is there any outdoor, you know, housing of them? Is everything going to be inside the building if they're there for an extended period of time?
Yes, so they'll be contained within the salon. There is like a little, a yard that we could, you know,
It's fenced in.
Fenced in for Melissa's personal pets for, you know, potty breaks and things like that. But inside, we do have three, three different sized kennels to accommodate dogs.
Okay, yep, just thinking, you know, issues and stuff with neighbors, which we'll talk through everything. And you said everything will be a by appointment only?
Yes.
So that's how you'll control traffic in and out of the facility?
Right, I also have a horseshoe driveway. I don't know if that helps, but it would be...
I can see that in the picture as well.
Yeah, it would be very nice just for them to be able to drop off, pick up, but no, you know, typically a grooming is, is what, two hours?
Between two and two and a half hours.
So it might even only be one dog in there. It just depends, you know, but we're not, definitely would never do more than three.
Yep, understood. Any exterior signage being added for the home occupation or just small signs or...
Small. I'd like to put a small sign. Yeah. Not sure if that's allowed or not. She is allowed a sign for identification purposes.
Yep, it's just, I mean, we don't have it identified, where it would be, which sign as far as traffic patterns, just trying to make sure we understand.
Oh, okay, I would like to put one at the end of the driveway, you know, there's a, um, Light post. A light post with a lag pole that comes out this way, so I just wanted to do a drop-down one on that, that's it. You know, nothing huge, yeah, just for a marker for, for, um,
People know where you are, which driveway you're pulling to.
Exactly, yeah.
So maybe he already repeated, you have just two, two or less employees?
Just two.
Just us, yes.
So would there be any exterior changes really to the property?
Absolutely none, no.
Waste? How do you handle the waste or anything, do you think you see anything different with the waste?
I don't, I don't see anything different with the waste, you know.
Maybe just an extra bag of hair in the trash can at the, at the end of the week, that's about all.
Yeah, I mean...
I'm just kind of going through a list here.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay. I didn't even think of that, like, if I need like a myo-hazard in case there ever is. Right, we would have to get myo-hazard.
Obviously, nothing to interfere with radio or television?
No.
I think those days are gone anyway. And you have parking to accommodate?
I do, yes.
Will you be selling any other articles like soaps or anything?
Nothing.
You're going to comply with state and federal regulations?
Yes.
And all alterations will be approved by the building official?
Correct.
Okay, go ahead. Any other question?
I'm just wondering, so you might have more than one dog there at a time. And so, is there some way to separate them so they don't see each other and start barking because you're in a neighborhood, right? Or, I'm having trouble figuring out how far your neighbors are, but...
Oh, do you mean as far as when they're in the building or...
Yeah, if they're in the building and, you know, they get into, I mean, if they're in the same space, some dogs just get noisy.
Right.
So I'm just wondering whether you would have the possibility of keeping them separate so that, you know, I don't know how close your neighbors are either. So, you know, if, if you have some dogs barking at each other, you know, how much?
Exactly. I think it would really be on client base, right?
Yeah, certainly.
If they say our dog is dog aggressive, we wouldn't have any other dogs in the shop at that time.
Right, we would make special accommodations for such circumstances.
We're not going to be so, you know, overrun with business that we can't accommodate if someone brings in a dog that's not dog friendly. So, I mean, if it ever did come to that, it's very easy to drape something over the kennel so they can't see each other, so.
Okay.
So you said you would have kennels, so they're going to be in the kennels if they're not being groomed, is that correct?
Correct, yes, I believe that's state law, yes.
And will never allow face-to-face contact unless it's not, unless it's approved by pet parents. So say like, I'm here today and my neighbor's here, oh, our dogs play all the time, they can, you know, hang out and sniff each other within the salon.
It's not happening.
Unless we have that explicit, you know, permission, you know, the dogs will never be face-to-face, you know, interacting with each other.
So, and Marie, you've reviewed all the special permit requirements with them and...
Yes.
Okay, just one last question on the, on the hours, so, I don't know if I heard the answer, is it Monday through Friday, is it Saturday, Sunday as well?
Monday through Friday and we're thinking right at this time every other Saturday.
But not a full day on Saturday, maybe more like a half day, yeah.
Okay, just want to make sure I understand the record, then Sunday's off right now.
Correct.
For now, yes.
Any other commission questions? Staff? None?
No questions. We, we met with the applicant prior to, during the application process. Got to go out and saw the exterior of the property when the placard was up and all that stuff, so no real concerns. The proposed number of dogs is less than what's allowed as of right for any homeowner to have on a, on a property, so.
Anybody from the public like to speak to this application? You're with them, so I assume so.
Yeah, you better be quiet.
Okay, anybody else one more time around?
Just, so, and Marie, just because we don't have copies of it, the letter from the landlord, do you have?
Yes.
Nothing in there of concern, just straight up permission?
Straight up permission.
Okay.
I actually talked to him, he came in, he signed it in front of me, so.
Okay, just because we didn't have it and then same thing, a copy of the application, just straight up, nothing of concern? Okay.
Okay, anybody else, any other questions? Commissions, staff, public, one more time? Any else want to add? I have a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose or abstentions? So we'll probably vote on that in a few minutes. If not quicker than.
More seconds, more seconds?
So you can, depends how much you rambles.
Ma'am.
Oh, I'm like, what does this mean?
Okay, no problem, okay.
Oh, I seated him, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
It wasn't me rambling, okay, just so you know. No, I've been trying to decide how do I ramble. Next. Unfinished business, special permit application 22-1298, Melissa Frank, Davenport Pensac owner, 330 State Avenue, JIS MAP 111, lot 16.44 acres. Low-density zone, request special permit to allow home occupation in the building outside the residence in the garage. Wizard of pause pet grooming under section 412, 10, 595 and 595. Article VII. I can have a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve.
And do I, any, anything, no?
Well, whatever we discussed, whatever.
Okay.
Waiver of the survey.
Oh, yeah, waiver of the survey.
Right.
Okay, so including the waiver of a survey, do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Michael. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Brian Card.
Yes.
Virga Lawrence.
Yep.
John Serentopolis.
Yes.
Michael Huco.
Yes.
And Keith Thurlo.
Yes.
Intimously.
You're good.
The advertisement for this will most likely appear in Friday's paper and we'll have a 15-day appeal period from that time. But we'll send you a letter with all that information.
Does that mean we leave the appeal period before we can move on?
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you.
Bye, guys.
Good luck.
One of the conditions is you have to sit to the end of the meeting.
I knew there was a...
Damn it.
I forgot that, that condition. Yeah, that was a good one. Site plan review, application 22-121301, Luke Walker, Susan Page owner, 208, 208 Cutler Road, JIS MAP 5, lot 4, 3.9 acres. Ability to construct secondary dwelling unit under Town of Killenly zoning regulations 586. In section 470, site plan review. Review application, staff is requesting the review be done by staff level. Commissioners, any questions on this?
No, I'd, I would say though that I'm fine with it being done on staff level.
Okay. Michael?
Same.
John?
Yes.
My, John, you?
You. Just for that, I'm going to ask a question.
Go ahead.
I'm for you. No, just because there was no plan, so just a secondary dwelling being built in Killenly.
It's a secondary dwelling unit, as explained, the property goes into Putnam. And I'm going to say over 50% of the house that exists is in Putnam.
Okay.
So in essence, it's really, it's just one house.
Not our problem.
Yeah.
Not our problem, okay, yeah.
They had one over there already, what? On that same, must be neighbor or two.
Probably.
They got one on the other side in Putnam?
No, I mean, in Killenly, one of the first ones we did was just down the road from that.
Oh, okay.
Because that went on a steep hill.
Yeah, I think it's like 214 or something like that, yeah.
Okay. I have a motion to that effect to...
I'll make the motion.
Make that motion, have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose or abstentions? Okay. That's done. Site plan review, application 12, 22-1302, Woodbury Supply. Paul Neelen, Neelen Holden's LLC owner, 140 Luisa Vans. JIS MAP 57, lot 6, 3.2 acres, industrial zone for construction of two commercial loading docks under Town of Killenly regulations. 430 industrial zone in section 470, site plan review. Any questions on this from commissioners? This is a request for staff to do it, handle it, site plan review.
So it, is, since you've asked that, seems like several times, so are we changing our procedures here? No?
The attorney at one time requested, said that.
Requested that we bring everything to you and let you know that staff's willing to do, basically was willing to do it. We don't consider it that it would have to necessarily become to the board. Because it's not a brand-new building on a brand-new site and that sort of thing, so.
I just wanted to understand it.
It's just the way our regulations are written.
Yeah. Compared to our, the approved site plan, it would be a minor modification. Like typically it wouldn't be something that we would, you know, if it was brand-new, we wouldn't even have brought it back to you guys. It's a very slight modification.
Okay.
Any other questions from commissioners? John, Brian?
Nope.
I got it this time. Okay, staff, anything?
No.
Have a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Second by Michael. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose or abstentions? Okay, that's done too.
Okay, this is, you had asked me before for an addendum. This isn't so much in this addendum as you may want to take this special, this next special permit and your 824 at the same time, only because it considers the same parcel of real estate for the same purpose.
You're saying you want us to vote to combine it?
Right, you can accept what it is, is you have to look at it anyways for the 824. Because you have to do an 824 review because the town is, the town council should proceed to consider the purchase of the real estate as a possible midterm office location for the town constables. Town manager is here, she'll answer any questions the commission may have. But because it's also going to be a quote-unquote "construction of municipal land use", you would also have to schedule a special permit hearing for December 19th because of the zone that this par, this parcel of real estate is in.
What zone is it?
Village commercial.
Village, that's village.
So municipal use required is allowed but under special permit.
So what she's saying is we have to make the town manager come back in December and do this again.
Come again, it's okay. I don't mind.
So do you want us to do an 824 tonight or you want to...
Yes, the 824 needs to be done tonight in order to process the...
So your, your first item up is the special permit. I think what Anne Marie is trying to articulate is that it's going to be the same conversation for both items, so you can do them individually, but it's for the same parcel of land. You don't have to, you don't have to do a joint motion or a combined motion on them.
The only thing that you've got tonight for the special permit is to schedule the hearing.
You're going to let Anne Marie do her job and sit there as an applicant?
I'm an applicant. It's okay.
It's clear, it's on my report. For the special permit, tonight is requested to schedule the hearing for December 19th. And then you're going to be doing the 824.
All right, special permit application 22-1303, Town of Killenly, United We Stand LLC owner, 26 Soap Street, JIS MAP 106, lot 15. 68 acres, village commercial zone to locate offices of the town constables as a special permitted use under TOK zoning regulations, section 420.1.2A, public service corporation or municipal land use. Receive application, schedule a hearing for Monday. Is the application complete first? We want to make sure it's complete.
Make sure that's complete.
Yeah.
Well, according to legal counsel, I can no longer determine if an application is complete, only you, so you receive it and schedule it, so. But it's as close as it's going to be, let's put it this way.
You're the one that gets the salary.
Yeah.
We work for free.
But under new case law...
Things change all the time.
So you can, you just schedule it for a hearing if the application's...
Anybody have any questions from commission members?
I think it's a good location.
Brian?
Nope.
Burke?
No.
Michael?
You're going to schedule the meeting?
So we, somebody want to schedule this, somebody make a motion to schedule for December 19th? Any questions for Mary, she's here.
Right there. John made it.
What?
You see it, schedule for December.
Schedule for, on the December 19th.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Burke. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions? None. Okay.
Now you can do the 824.
Speak in the obvious. Okay.
Then go back to minutes.
I was going to say, there are minutes in between, if you wanted to do those, that's fine.
We're going to make a think.
He can run his meeting.
I can't run much else in my life, so please give me a couple of minutes.
I'm right there with you.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not going to go out of sequence. Workshop meeting minutes, October 17th, have a motion? You got anything with that, Burke?
What, you want me to make a motion, I'll make a motion. Workshop meeting, October 17th, 2022.
Well, the only one usually has changes, so if you have changes, you... Second, a second by anybody?
I'm just proofreading really usually.
Everybody got a second?
Okay.
Any, any further discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, none. Regular meeting min-
Abstain.
Brian abstains. You got to speak up.
I did.
You moved your hand. Regular meeting minutes, October 17th. You have a motion, please.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Second by John. Any further discussion?
No.
Wow. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Brian?
Abstain.
Or no's? Okay. Other miscellaneous, 824 review, application number 22-1303, Town of Killenly, United We Stand LLC owner, 26 Soap Street, JIS MAP 106, lot 15. 68 acres, village commercial zone for the purpose, purchase of property at 26 Soap Street to use as a midterm location for the town constables. Go ahead.
Thank you. So the town council will be receiving this item tomorrow to schedule the public hearing and special town meeting for the potential purchase of this property at 26 Soap Street. And this is really as we progress through the development of the law enforcement division of Killenly, the growth of the constabulary program. Currently, they are housed here in the town hall and the office space that they are in. We currently have six constables and two resident state troopers and they have filled up the office space that we have located here. We're in the process, I'll be onboarding our seventh constable in about a week and a half and our eighth one will be joining us probably by the beginning of January. We're in our interview process right now for our eighth officer and that brings us to our fully budgeted complement of officers that we have budgeted for. They've just completely outgrown this space here. And so looking for a space that is centrally located in, in the community that is provides easy access for them to major routes and has essential infrastructure connection, including connection to our fiber network. Those were kind of key components in looking for a interim space. And I call this a midterm space because the community has talked about developing a municipal police force which will come with having to build a police station that, that also has public spaces and holding facilities and evidence rooms and all of those other components. That is not what this facility will be. This facility is strictly going to be administrative offices. Because all of those other components, while we're under the resident state trooper contract, are all housed at Troop D. So Troop D is still our holding facility, Troop D is still where all the evidence is still housed and processed and all of that. But this is our administrative hub, if you will, for our law enforcement division. They've just simply outgrown their space that they have here. And in order for that program to continue to develop as the community sees fit to develop it over time, they need space to grow. So the town council in July or August, I can't remember which month now, had approved the use of ARP funds, of American Rescue Plan Act funding, that the town received of about, of $800,000 to dedicate towards relocating that division to its own dedicated space. This facility became available and we've been in negotiations with the property owner. And so we're well within our budgeted amount of what we're looking at purchasing it for. And it does provide adequate space for that midterm, so we won't need to find yet another location after we get to a certain size. Our next step would be going into a full facility when the, when the community is ready to make that investment.
Can I ask a question? So, this is, are, is it being, are the troops, troopers being split? Some are going to stay in Danielson and some in Davil or everybody's going to Davil?
So every, all of the officers will go to, will be, will be, all of their administrative offices will be out of that location on Soap Street. It wouldn't make sense to have them split because of the infrastructure needs and to have any of them continue to be housed here. So they would all be located in that one space, but where that is, it has such great direct access to 101 and then easy access to all the other, you know, I mean, they can pretty much get to downtown Danielson in a really short period of time. So it, it is a very central spoke by having it located right there, which was critical in looking at what is, what is a, you know, a good fit for that accessibility by having it right there. So they would all transition to that space and that would be where that administrative hub would come, would be. They would still do their normal patrolling, so they're, you're still going to see them in downtown Danielson, they're going to do all their normal patrolling. You're still going to see bike patrols. So they do a lot of bike patrols through the summertime in downtown Danielson and then up through Ombel, so you'll still, still see all those bike patrols. This actually, this facility will give them the adequate storage that right now, we don't have capacity to store appropriately the, the equipment. Um, this actually, this facility will give them the adequate storage that right now, we don't have capacity to store appropriately, um, the, the equipment that they, that they have and, that they need. Um, we have, um, some of their storage right now is, um, down in our basement and, I don't know if any of you have been down in our basement, but everything goes down there to die a very ugly death.
And never to be found again, by the way.
Huh?
And never to be found again.
Well, you know, sometimes that can happen, so, um, it's, it's important for their equipment to be housed in, you know, to be stored in a, in an appropriate location. This does give, um, sufficient storage, um, and, and room for that storage to, to grow as, as the demands grow. This also provides, another key component to this is, um, it will provide, uh, a secure space in the rear portion of the garage space. The rear portion of this facility is actually fully fenced in, um, uh, with, uh, and secured gated. That's important, all, any of our, um, spare vehicles will be housed here and, uh, secured behind the gate as well as, um, on security cameras, so the, the the, uh, facility is, we're purchasing the security camera, uh, system as well. Right now, our spares don't necessarily have the security of being in a fenced-in area, which for a law enforcement vehicle, that's, that, that is a critical component. When you have a spare vehicle, that your spare vehicle is, um, uh, secured at all times. Um, this provides that, um, available security, um, to that, to their spare vehicles and spare equipment.
So, I only have one quibble.
Yeah.
And, um, when my kid was in elementary school
Okay.
in Dayville, I had to be on that little street that this thing is going on. And when, um, I was leaving, uh, the school, you know, to get back on one oh one
Sure.
is really hard, so if somebody is in an emergency situation.
Right.
You know, my, there are smarter people than I am looking at this thing, but
Yep.
that's the one thing, you know, that having tried to get onto Route one oh one at three o'clock in the afternoon was difficult.
Sure, so we've had that conversation, all of our law enforcement has been out there numerous times, um, and we've had that conversation. I've specifically brought out that conversation, but one of the big differences between my personal vehicle, your personal vehicle, and a police cruiser is we don't have lights and sirens on our vehicles. They do. So, in an emergency situation, they have lights and sirens going on, which tends to alert traffic around them, and they're able to get on, and they're able to immediately gain access, right? So, their access, or ability to access into a, um, busier intersection or busier area is a, is a lot swifter than, say, a layperson's vehicle like ours, because we do not have emergency, you know, vehicles like that. You know, Dayville Fire is right there, right across the way, they access that point as well on a regular basis. And so, you know, that is the, the benefit of, you know, having that emergency, lights and sirens.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, question? So, the garage will be used for vehicle storage?
The garage will have, uh, it'll be vehicles, but it'll also be, um, like they have their, their road bikes that they use, so the road bikes will be in there. And then, um, additional, um, equipment, um, they might, they might have some additional equipment that they're using for some of their, um, ongoing training, uh, props and stuff like that, that they need, might need to use.
Not maintenance?
Uh, no, um, they, there is gonna be a vehicle lift in there, and they will be able to, um, put a vehicle up on a lift, but we would have one of our mechanics from the highway garage come over if they need to put a vehicle up on a lift, and that would only be if they need to look at something underneath the vehicle. Vehicle maintenance is still intended to happen at the highway garage, that's where all the vehicle maintenance happens, at the highway garage. That's the int- intended going forward, that's where we're looking to do the maintenance. We're not looking at making this into a, a maintenance garage for the, for the police cruisers.
Any other questions, anybody? This is eight twenty-four, so if we don't get the public in, you wanna say something? Staff, anything else? Anybody want to make a motion?
That lift comes with the building. It's already there.
Yeah, the lift is in the building, we're purchasing the lift as part of the pa- as part of the package.
Anybody make a motion?
Make a motion to move the eight twenty-four referral.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, abstentions?
Thank you very much.
Should've asked this, are they gonna, I meant to ask, is they gonna do any forward changes to the facade, or?
Um, we are look, so we do have to do some hardening of the exterior for security purposes, so we are gonna have to put glazing on the windows. We are looking at, the only really, um, exterior portion that would have any change is, uh, right at the entrance, the door, the entrance doors to the office space, currently it's, um, uh, like a glass door with a glass side piece to it. We're looking at putting, um, almost like a vestibule attached to the front of it, really to harden that front entryway. Um, and we will be putting, um, a call box on the exterior, so that way, should somebody, you know, think that they can come there and seek police assistance, they'll know, there'll be a call box that they can call Troop D, because our officers are still gonna be, they're all dispatched out of Troop D, so the public aren't gonna be able to just walk into this facility, they still are gonna need to go, you know, they have to go to Troop D. So, we will have that as an emergency call box, so that way, if somebody does come to that facility, they will have direct access to, um, at least, you know, making a contact to a dispatcher.
And, and you get your own flagpole, it's already there.
It is. It's a nice flagpole.
Just for, uh, point, my wife's, my wife's godfather and uncle built that place originally.
Really?
Yeah, they did, hospital beds in there, believe it or not.
Really?
Yeah.
Huh.
They built it originally. Anyway, thank you. Uh, where are we?
Zone text, zone text review.
We're gonna have another special meeting next meeting?
Yes, do you want another, uh, another meeting, that'd be December nineteenth, it'd be at six o'clock, be in this room.
Do we want to be in a special meeting December nineteenth, or we want to wait till January? People's opinions. I would rather wait till January. John?
Doesn't matter to me.
Me neither.
Me neither.
Well, we're talking to a bunch of senior citizens.
Well, we'll accommodate you two.
I, I would continue to have it, because otherwise we tend to forget what we're talking about.
We'll forget anyway, I do.
Oh, yeah. I would, I would keep it moving along.
All right, January, December nineteenth.
So, at six o'clock, December nineteenth, here in this.
And I may be out of comment.
Oh, yeah, there you go. There you go. Set us up.
Okay.
So, we'll do that. Correspondents?
Um, you got one letter, uh, that was received on November fifteenth. Um, usually, um, this letter was addressed to you, that's why it's here. The person who wrote this letter wants to remain anonymous. Their concerns were the parking around, uh, Killenly Dental Care. And what we, uh, what staff did is that staff went out, did a survey of the parking, and they gave you a map with the notes, so it meets the parking requirements underneath our regulations.
It's kinda hard to do in existing place, unless they made a major change, isn't it?
Yeah, they didn't make a major change.
No, it's been the same since it was originally approved in the eighties.
I've been going there since. They ripped a few of my teeth off.
Okay.
But that's, so that's been already looked into, we can't respond to anybody because we don't know who sent the letter.
Somebody disgruntled.
Did you pass it on to the, the owner?
We haven't reached out to them yet, the only recommendation was, uh, whether or not to repaint the, the existing parking, which I believe is their, the intention. There was a change of, or there's a transition of ownership. I believe Dr. Sheffield is retiring, so.
His daughter's taken over.
Yep, that's, that's the only change that's occurred there, really, they're doing some small renovation work right now.
I don't know, my doctor's retiring. Um, meeting dates for January to January, any changes, any comments, anybody? Uh, Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Agencies quarterly, any comments on it? Department reports, zoning enforcement?
I have none.
And the wetlands?
Uh, we might have a, uh,
Farm?
quorum, um, by the beginning of December, meaning we'll have our first meeting in a while in January.
Wow.
Which is good, because we have applications.
I can imagine. Economic development?
Um, my department is currently applying for a, uh, EPA multi-purpose grant to conduct one phase one and two phase two assessments, um, seeking reuse and remediation, planning, um, funding, and a cleanup fund. Um, we'll be holding our third small business academy in March of twenty twenty-three. To date, we've had seven participants open businesses in town, including the one that you just approved for an in-home business. Um, and the phase one and phase two environmental assessments at one twenty-five Alexander Parkway have been completed. The findings and cost opinions should be in before the end of the year. And that is all.
Town council?
Ula, do you have anything to report?
Can you hear me okay, 'cause I'm driving?
We can hear you.
Okay, so the town council meeting for November is tomorrow, but from the special town council meeting, there were, um, three appointments and reappointments to town, um, commissions, one was, uh, um, water pollution control, the other one was for historic district, and I believe the third was, was for wetlands. And, um, Mary Braun made a brief presentation on, um, the progress on the, um, KMS, they should be going into phase two um, in January, and, um, the Westfield Avenue, um, is progressing, and they should be able to start renovations, I believe, in the summer. And that should not impact any of the occupation of the building. That's pretty much what I have, because, um, our meeting is tomorrow.
Thank you. Anne Marie, before, one other thing, can, can we schedule some kind of a thing with the attorney to, so he can just review with us? So, we're up to s- par with, uh, up to speed with participation by E C D and, and planning and zoning meetings, so with the zone, in regards to zone changes and, and, uh,
I will check into that, that would probably won't happen till after the first of the year, though.
I mean, I don't know if the commission, but it seemed like we probably could do it, if we could do it at a workshop. And then just do it even via, via, uh.
And that could count possibly towards the educational credits that they need to continue? Mary, quick question. If they have the attorney come in to answer some questions, could that count towards the educational that they need to do the educational hours? It all depends what category, right?
I, we'll second with, I do so.
Okay.
Well, that way there, we can just get it up to speed on. Yeah, I saw it.
Is this on the state level?
Yeah.
Do we get paid for that?
They, no, they, no. But they did put an education requirement.
Really?
Yes, they did.
Where is this school?
It's right here.
Okay.
It's not clear, it, you have a little bit of time before it all takes, and it's actually officially required, but it's on the statute, it's on the book.
Are there gonna be written tests?
No, it's just a rap with tests.
I'm being snarky.
I know.
What is the standard? So many hours, uh.
Yeah, I can, we can pull it out and get it to you guys. It was in, um, um, within one of the last bills, um, not this podcast and the session before, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm gonna slip that in right before the motion to adjourn, which I just made. Second?
Uh, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Okay.
Have a happy Thanksgiving, everyone.